We are going to start our study session. And before we start, I think I see Syracuse Academy of Science students and I want to welcome them and say, "Hey."
Hey.
Okay. All righty, Counselor Rudd.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the A, which is amending the local law to move the Bureau of Administrative Adjudication. We previously had a committee meeting on this. I don't have any additional concerns. It was just tabled previously for the appropriate time period. Are there any other questions on it?
No.
Nope.
All right.
Call me ready.
Ready.
Thank you. I have item nine, and I should know by Monday, so I'll call that one ready as well. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, Madam President. I have item 10. And if there are no questions on that, that item is ready.
All righty, thank you. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. We begin with item 11. So, item 11 was held during the last meeting. This essentially removes the city from the business of being, acting as a broker between private businesses and trash collection. So, are there any questions on this item?
Well, I'm in, do now.
I guess I'd ask the same question that I brought up at leadership today is, the contract with the hauler expires next year at the end of the budget year. And you are coming to us with a large comprehensive plan as to how to go forward with this. So, my question would be, does it make a difference that this isn't put off until then, until the plan and incorporated when the contract ends?
Sure. Corey Dunham, Chief Operating Officer. So, while I think there is a logic to how we define commercial properties and what services we provide in terms of sanitation, why it makes sense to hold that while we have a larger conversation about sanitation. I think we don't plan on expanding this service in terms of acting as a billing department for Syracuse haulers and procuring services on behalf of businesses. That's not going to be part of the vision of our sanitation plan that we'll present at the end of the year. We're focusing on the services that we provide. That's what the sanitation plan will reflect, what services we provide, how we provide them, but not expanding our role in procuring services for businesses, especially when those services are easily accessible and readily available.
So, help me understand again, because when we're talking about the billing services for the commercial properties, and you said that they're doing the work for Syracuse haulers now, doing the pass-through, what's the actual time that that person is committed to doing that work on behalf of Syracuse haulers?
So, this employee who's doing the billing spends about 50% of his time doing billing for this practice. And again, what this is, commercial properties are required to have private haulers. That's in the ordinance. You know, our conversations in the previous weeks have been, how do we define commercial properties? We're setting that aside. Commercial properties are required to have private haulers. These 130 properties, or whatever it is, have a private hauler, but the billing comes through DPW, whereas every other business just deals directly with whatever private hauler that they have. And so, we just want to take ourselves out of the middle and have these businesses work directly with the private haulers.
So, somebody in DPW is spending half of their time doing the billing for...
Yes.
Okay.
And we just don't feel like we're adding any value to this process. It's easily accessible. There are 18 licensed haulers in the city that every other business uses, and we are confident that these businesses that are currently the clients can find a better value by just going into the market.
And have you spoken with businesses as a collective group like this? I mean, because obviously, there's, you know, power in buying when you...
Sure. I mean, it's difficult to reach all of them. We plan on doing, you know, sending out a letter to folks to let them know that, you know, we're no longer going to be participating in this practice if this item is approved. But we have had conversations with business, Counselor Carney's business is on here. When we spoke with him, he didn't seem to have any significant objections. So, we are confident that we're delivering a better value, that people can get a better value on the market.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 12.
Okay, what are you doing with that one, Counselor?
I think it's ready.
Okay.
So, this is a nonprofit that is looking to donate feminine hygiene products to stock in City Hall. I think this is, you know, the New York State Legislature passed an act, I think it was the legislature, but either way, it went into effect last year that all public schools needed to make these products available, and so this is just sort of in line with that thinking. We see this as a first step, but we'd like to work with this nonprofit to make these products available in our community centers, in our parks, and, you know, where it certainly would address populations that could benefit from this. But this is just a first step to try it in City Hall and City Hall Commons.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Item 13.
Commissioner Awal for Syracuse Water Department. Item 13 is to apply and accept for a grant for the Morningside Reservoir Roof Replacement project that we've already bonded for. It's already under design. Planning to go for construction, bid construction this winter, to start construction in the spring.
So, for the 3.5 million, it says that the grant will cover 60%. Do you have any idea what our cost is going to be on this?
We had an evaluation done, a design report done for the cost of the new roof replacement, along with some additional security measures and repiping at the reservoir. It's estimated to be about $3 million.
Our cost?
Yes. So, we bonded for 3.5. If we can cover 60%, that's just over $2 million. We'll get in the grant.
Any idea of the likelihood of the grant?
We've been successful the last five grant applications, so I guess I'm hopeful. We should know probably in a few months whether or not we receive.
Commissioner, can you remind me, what's the useful life of this? So, if we get it, how long is it good for?
So, these roofs are estimated for a 50-year lifespan. So, hopefully, it'll last.
What's the plan if we aren't awarded the grant?
We've already bonded for the project, so we're going to go ahead with it.
Say that one more time.
We've already bonded for the project, so we have the money allocated for it. We're going to go ahead.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I didn't mishear something. So, if awarded, the grant will cover 60% of the cost. This is the grant we're applying for.
Yes.
When asked what our share of the cost would be, I was more than 60%. So, did I hear that wrong?
So, if we receive a full 60%, they'll cover about $2 million of the project. So, our cost would be the remaining $1 million.
Okay, right. Okay, that's what I figured.
1.5.
Right. Whatever the construction costs come in. Right now, it's an estimated construction cost of $3 million.
He said the asking of $3 million. That's okay.
So, once we receive the bids, we'll have a firm number on that construction figure.
But you bonded for...
3.5.
Total amount?
Yes. Any other questions?
Let's do... Sorry. Okay, item 14.
Item 14 is to enter an agreement with a software company called Aztec, which is the city work software we're using for our CMMS program that we are currently implementing and underway. This will help maintain and operate our workflows within the water department, so getting a more efficient workflow for doing projects, issuing work orders internally, and managing our assets.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. Items 15 and 16.
Good afternoon. Julie Lefebvre, Commissioner Parks and Recreation. Item number 15 is to continue and enter into the agreement with Davie Resource Group. This is for our tree database. It controls everything that we do on a daily basis, tree calls, tree cuts, anything associated with our forestry department. And item number 16 is to authorize payment for entertainment for our spooktacular event.
Do we know how many trees we planted so far?
I do not. I can get that number to you. You want to know from January? We're about to start the fall planting right now.
I want to know what we've planted to date.
So far in 2019?
Yes.
I can get you that information. I can probably get it within the next five minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
And one more thing. When you plant those trees, I know that you said it's up to the resident, the homeowner, whoever, to say, "Okay." So, who maintains that tree once this...
So, Steve Harris is not here, but with my knowledge, I think that you might be... There's Anadaga Earth Corps, which does some that where the residences see if they're eligible, and then they contact Anadaga Earth Corps. But then there's city planning, which we do, and then those, once we plant it, it's a city tree. It's ours.
Hmm, we need to talk offline then.
Okay.
Thank you. And Counselor Ryan is not here, so...
Thanks. Item 17.
His Counselor is Dave Dovakio, Commissioner Finance. Item 17 is a final year extension agreement with the County of Anadaga. In 2015, we entered into an agreement on an annual basis for them to pick up the U.S. mail here at City Hall Finance. We collect all the mail throughout the city. They pick up, deliver to the civic center, fix the bulk mail rate, county mail rate, and then, once a month, we reimburse them. And they take the mail to the post office.
And I think we had asked a question once before about the frequency of the pickup. So, what do we do about that?
We did speak with them, and they will make two, and I believe they have been. I've not heard any problems recently, but I think since you brought that up, we've asked them to come twice a day, and I think, I believe they have.
Okay.
And this will be the final contract, and then, next year, work a new agreement.
Does this work? Is it... Like, last year, we asked questions about the $30,000 to just drop off our mail.
Well, the $30,000, they have labor associated with it. They pick the mail up, as I said. The cost of the U.S. mail is extra. The $30,000 is the cost, labor, the machines that they would have at the county. They have a delivery van that picks up the mail, and again, they transport to the post office. So, they have certain... That's the extent. I think Counselor Hudson asked last year about getting more information, and they did provide that. But in 2015, I don't have anything further than that, but I think in our next, to revisit this program, we can request a little more detailed information. For example, we have one person that comes to City Hall, picks up the mail. There's more than that in their mail operation.
And if we had to do it ourselves, do you think it would cost us more than the 30?
Yes, because the most minimum pay title in the city, the CSEA system can't touch equipment. I mean, they can answer phone, computers, but this is a little more... So, you're probably looking at a paid position in the $30,000 range, and that's before fringe benefit, so...
Okay.
Machine operator-type positions more expensive.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. Item 18.
Good afternoon, Counselors. Item 18 is an agreement with the county to fund one housing inspector for our TRA, or otherwise known as tenant rental agreements. This has been on go for about 10 years now. It's a good program that we have with them.
Questions?
Yeah, could you just refresh my memory? What is the agreement again? What does this job do?
The tenant rental is landlords will sign up for this program, request a code inspector to perform a pre- and post-inspection of the premises for security deposit reasons.
That's great. So, it's at the... The city provides the service?
Correct.
At no additional cost to the landlord?
No.
Nice. And is there any... Do you feel most property owners are aware of this service?
I believe they are, just a lot of them don't sign up for it. So, we work with the county where we perform some HUD inspections as well for their benefit. I think this is a win-win for both parties.
And are they... Do you feel the... So, we have one inspector dedicated to this, yeah?
We use multiple inspectors.
Multiple inspectors?
Yep.
So, there's not a big problem with backlog?
No, not at all.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Before you walk away, it says tenant rental agreement. So, the tenant can sign up for this, or does the landlord...
The landlord needs to.
And that's why you said a lot of them don't sign up?
Correct.
Because the landlord would have to sign up for this to happen?
It should be called landlord.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sharon Owens, Deputy Mayor. It is the agreement for the rental subsidy, so the landlord has to sign up with the county to receive the rental subsidy, and the inspection is part of that process. Okay, so it's the ones that's getting subsidized, and they have to sign up for it? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Lovejoy Grinnell.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 19 and 20.
Stop making all that noise.
Good afternoon. I'm Donna Briscoe, Assistant Director of Personnel. We are going to offer flu shots three dates this year. We typically offer the flu shots. We encourage that. We contracted with Pro Act. They were the least cost per shot. So, our flu clinics, we kind of coordinate that with, in October, with our annual open enrollment. So, that's the flu clinics that we'll be having. This year, we added a third date. The county used to do a first responder drive-through clinic. They are not doing it. So, we're offering it to our first responders. That's the third date.
So, this is for city employees?
City employees, correct. And their family members that are on, if they have their family members on there, they are eligible.
So, every city employee has insurance, correct?
That's correct.
But we're going to pay an additional $10,000 for them to get a flu shot?
It's cheaper. It's not... It's cheaper than what it would cost. So, we get billed directly. If they go to the pharmacy and get it, it's going to be more expensive. So, this is a way for us to encourage our employees to get the flu shot, and it'll actually cost us less.
Okay.
And it'll cost us less if our employees don't get the flu, so...
Yeah, but I just don't...
I don't understand the question.
Because we're already paying for insurance, right? We're paying into the insurance system, but then, we're going to take an additional $10,000 for people to opt into if they want to pay, if they want to get the flu shot.
So, we pay, yes, but this is not an additional cost. If we did not do this, and people went and got their flu shots either at the doctor's appointments, or went directly to the pharmacy, it would cost us more, because we are self-insured. We pay for everything.
So, what would they be... As a city employee, if you went to your doctor to get a flu shot, how much would it cost you?
So, you would be paying for the doctor visit, which probably is going to be around... I mean, that in itself, we would probably pay over $100 just for the office visit, and then, you would be paying for the flu shot, which I believe is around $40.
And if you went to the pharmacy to get a flu shot, you would only be paying like $40 if you went to the pharmacy to get one, correct?
Right. But here, if you have it, we're only paying 30, so we're saving $10 a shot.
Okay.
Like, our insurance cost isn't fixed, so if we spend more, it goes up. So, this is a way to control that bucket. Even though it seems like we're spending more, we should spend less in the bigger bucket.
I guess. I just, I don't agree with it, but I don't get the flu shot, so... But I don't agree with spending the $10,000. That's just my opinion.
Other questions?
When do city employees sign up?
Bless you.
So, we have...
Show up on the day, or you book in advance?
So, what we're sending out is a flyer, and there's a Google Doc, so we can have people sign up for the specific dates, and then, they would come on that date. And, I mean, we've done this for seven years now, and it's a pretty good turnout, and they are able to handle the amount of people that come through.
So, an email will go out to let us know when signup begins?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. More questions? Thank you, Donna. Thank you. Item 20. Is there someone here?
Just want to correct myself when I answered your question. That is for the security deposit, not the rent subsidy. Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
The part that I'm confused on is, is it open to landlords, or is it only open to landlords who are taking a tenant with the rental subsidy? Because at first, when Ken talked, it sounded like it was open to landlords, but then, when you came up, it sounded to me like it was only for people who were getting the rental subsidy.
This is Stephanie Pascal, New Year of Business Development. So, when someone is applying for or using public assistance for rental payments, and the county got away from giving security deposits, instead, they give sort of a letter of, "We promise to pay." And it's those instances, not every tenant needs that letter to get into an apartment, but those that do, those are the ones that DSS is paying us to inspect for the letter of security, if you will.
So, this is in lieu of a security deposit, correct?
Correct. It's basically extending to a landlord, "We promise." We're going to inspect it at the beginning. We have pictures. At the end, if the tenant caused damage, we will make that right.
So, it wouldn't be for traditional landlords that, right?
It's for anyone who needs that letter of security versus a security deposit.
So, any landlord that opts to waive the security deposit can use this in lieu of it as a security deposit?
Correct.
It's a good program.
Thank you. You going to talk about United Way as well?
Sure. I don't believe, unfortunately, Ginny couldn't be here today. As approved in this year's budget, there was a line for continuing our support at a reduced level for the Imagination Library Program, and that's the legislation you have before you today.
We get the books. We love them. Anyone have any questions?
The books are nice.
How much did it go down? You said it was a reduction?
I'm sorry?
You said it was a reduction. How much did it...
I believe the prior year was $50,000, but I could look that up.
Yeah, it's dropped by 15.
And I understand that, because I'm not saying this to you, Stephanie, but I'm saying this over, across the board. We've been talking about this for, since I've been on the council, about reducing what's going out to not-for-profits, because we have to run a city. So, that's not for you. I'm looking at Deputy Mayor. She knows. Okay. So, just putting that out there. Sharon Owens, Deputy Mayor. Absolutely. So, across those not-for-profits that include Leadership of Greater Syracuse, multiple, we made reductions last year, and we're trying to gradually get them weaned off of the city budget, and trying to do that in a way that they can still provide great services they're providing. But helping them make strategic planning for their financial future. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. I have items 21 through 39. Item 21, we just held a committee meeting today at 10:00 a.m. for the agreement with the land bank. So, I'm going to call item 21, ready? And item 22?
Good afternoon. This item is related to our working relationship with Anadaga County Community Development and Anadaga County Health Department to administer a lead hazard control grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, the agreement just outlines the roles and responsibilities of those various departments to assist us in administering that grant.
Do you know if most of the funding, will it be going towards administration, or we're going to actually see, like, work being done through these funds?
So, the grant allows for 230 housing units to be lead risk-reduced. This, we have a 10% cap on administration with the grant. There are significant in-kind resources, both from, on the city side and from staff at the county, in order to pull off this grant. But the amount right there that's in your packet is for their staff to perform risk assessments, to bid out the construction, monitor the construction, and close it out. So, they're really handling the construction aspect, oversight of that. HUD is very prescriptive on how that's handled, and for us to have done that on our own, we would have had to hire probably five new staff to handle that volume. So, this was a significant savings in order to get the grant accomplished.
And out of the 230 housing units, how do you guys decide? Are you doing rental properties or owner-occupies?
So, any property, one to four units, is eligible for the program? We've prioritized properties that are in the neighborhood revitalization strategy area, and we are targeting rental properties. So, we've sent out notifications, postcards, but it is first-come, first-served in terms of the program. But we, owner-occupants are eligible, and you can't have been participated in the program in the past.
Okay. The rental ones...
A quick question before you go move off the lead. So, when we're looking at how we're administering this, are we looking at priority areas where children are involved?
Absolutely. So, the grant, it does indicate that a child six or under resides in the property to apply. Either they live there, or they spend a significant amount of time. So, if it's a grandparent who does childcare for a young child, they would qualify. So, they do ask for occupancy information, and it does prioritize, and I think they only allow us very few units that we don't have evidence already that there's a child six or under in the unit, but that if it's a property that's turning over, like a land bank property we're trying to do to get, that they promise to rent to families.
Okay, so going back to my initial question, because the rental properties, so, since we have such a poor history with landlords taking care of their properties, is there an opportunity for people that are renting to reach out to you guys, to have you come in, or does it have to come from the landlord?
They can reach out in terms of, you know, letting us know they're concerned, and what we've been trying to do is have just much more constant contact, not just letters, but calling landlords, looking at their code enforcement history, really try to, you know, use both a carrot and a stick to get folks to apply. But tenants can certainly reach out to say, "Oh, jeez, I have a concern," but the landlord is the only one who can, the property owner is the only one who can officially apply.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
So, when you say the 230 properties that we're hoping to address with this, what exactly does lead reduction look like, and what is the cap on that? You know, when we talk about these properties, what exactly do you imagine being done? Does it vary from house to house, and what is the kind of spending average per house?
Sure. So, just to be clear, it's 230 units, not properties, so some are two families. That's okay. We expect to be doing a lot of friction surfaces, windows, doors, porches, where there's a lot of walking, siding, exterior repairs. The grant allows for approximately $13,000 per unit, but that often is not enough to get the lead remediation work done, so we are using other resources, like the Community Development Block Grant or loans from Home Headquarters for the landlords to make sure... You can't just do part of the work. If a risk assessment identifies 10 things, we have to do all 10 things.
So, this would be full remediation with most of these units?
It's risk reduction. So, in many instances with windows, it is window replacement, and that does remove the lead component, and other times, it's risk reduction in terms of mitigating that friction surface. It doesn't always mean abatement. It doesn't mean we take out every single component in which there is lead paint. That gets cost prohibitive.
Right, exactly. I'm just a bit confused, because isn't it the federal standards that make it difficult with the usually push for more full abatement-type protocol, right, with the federal government?
If you're spending more than $25,000 of federal funds per unit, you do, it does require abatement.
Okay, that's, so that's the issue. So, if you go above 25K, then you have to do full abatement?
Correct.
Okay, so this is keeping it at 13 and just...
Well, of these resources, there's other funding often needed. The amount that we allocate often does not cover the full amount.
So, if two streams of revenue come in there, and it gets to 25 or 26, then that kicks in the federal, even if it's a separate stream, or is it just...
Federal, yep. So, if it's CDBG, for example, that's federal, that can kick it. It's the, but if it's a mix of state and federal funds, it keeps it under the cap.
Okay, so if you were to put 15 of state money in there, that wouldn't trigger the federal guidelines to go for full abatement?[1711.83]
In many instances with windows, it is window replacement, and that does remove the lead component. And other times, it's risk reduction in terms of mitigating that friction surface. It doesn't always mean abatement. It doesn't mean we take out every single component in which there is lead paint. That gets cost prohibitive.
Right, exactly. I'm just a bit confused, because isn't it the federal standards that make it difficult with the... Usually push for more full abatement-type protocol, right? With the federal government?
If you're spending more than twenty-five thousand dollars of federal funds per unit, you do... It does require abatement.
Okay, that's... So that's the issue. So if you go above twenty-five K, then you have to do full abatement?
Correct.
Okay, so this is keeping it at thirteen and just...
Well, of these resources, there's other funding often needed. The amount that we allocate often does not cover the full amount.
So if two streams of revenue come in there, and it gets to twenty-five or twenty-six, then that kicks in the federal? Even if it's a separate stream, or is it just...
Federal, yep. So if it's CDBG, for example, that's federal, that can kick it. It's the... But if it's a mix of state and federal funds, it keeps it under the cap.
Okay, so if you were to put fifteen of state money in there, that wouldn't trigger the federal guidelines to go for full abatement?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Sorry, I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Stephanie, just one quickie, because it probably won't trickle down for a while. But all of the new legislation that's removing all of the protections is gonna flood us back again with asbestos and all that good stuff. How are we gonna handle that?
In terms of... You mean the federal government rolling back environmentals? Currently, it's still... We are still required to... Especially through this grant, not just... I'm glad you brought this up. There's a healthy home supplement. So lead paint is the primary focus of the grant. But we're also looking at, you know, radon, asbestos, water or mold issues, air quality, that sort of thing. So that's all part of the home health assessment that takes place for every unit that we walk in as part of this program. So that... None of that has been rolled back. And still with the Home Investment Partnership, the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant, we are still required, as of, you know, the contract we have today, to do environmental assessments. So that has not been rolled back through those programs yet.
Yet. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item twenty-three.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Yolanda Johnson, Construction Development Coordinator. I have item number twenty-three, where the property owner at four-oh-nine Stope is requesting permission to install a black aluminum fence that would encroach one-point-six inches, one foot, six inches off the sidewalk and four feet into the right-of-way.
Okay, so I do have a question for Neil and Ray Wills.
Friends.
So on the... Under the review comments, you wrote... It says, "DPW Transportation does not recommend approval of encroachment." Can you explain to us why?
Sure. So they're intending to encroach into the right-of-way. However, their property frontage, their sidewalk, or other things are in hazardous condition right now. So that is documented as part of those comments. As well as the design of this encroachment needs to be adjusted. So the amount that they're encroaching is not an issue. However, the design of the gate for the driveway is. This is something that's pretty standard. This is a standard comment we hand out, easy to remedy. But it relates to queuing a vehicle in the driveway without blocking the sidewalk. They're also proposing to install loop sensors in the asphalt in the right-of-way to mitigate that. This is really just a nuts and bolts, dimensions item that they need to adjust.
Okay. And so with these... So when you see something like this, and this is just from my understanding, so I know the process going forward. But why do you guys send this over to us if it's not... It's not really complete?
I don't send anything over.
I know you know, but I'm just saying, I want somebody to explain that to me, because I don't understand why we even bring it over here if it's not complete.
From my department, from the right-of-way department, once the application, all the comments are in IPS. And if it's not denied or on hold, we bring it to council for review.
Okay. And then how do you... So there has to be under the status section, there has to be a denied somewhere in here, and then you guys will send it back?
If it's denied or on hold, then the application won't move forward at all. It'll go back to the department or back to the applicant to make revisions.
Okay.
But I'm kinda with Counselor Allen, because it's like it's on our agenda, but you're reading the things on here, and DPW is basically saying that they don't recommend it, but we're still moving it forward. So that does create a problem. So I'm with Counselor Allen on that one.
Yeah. Good afternoon, councilors. Jake Dishaw, Director of the Central Permit Office. I agree, it can be a little confusing, and we'll try to fix our procedures and what we're doing. But ultimately, the right-of-way legally is controlled by the DPW Commissioner. So a lot of times, we have recommendations on what we want to see done. And some of this, I think, is a conditional approval on some things that we want to see adjusted. But what we're seeking is approval of allowing them to put the fence in the same right-of-way. And some of these details can be handled after that approval is issued, as Neil mentioned.
Legally may be the wrong term to use. To say that DPW legally controls the right-of-way is incorrect.
The only time the Commissioner has control is temporary use of the right-of-way. Permission is given, council has to approve the permission.
Fair enough.
Joe Barry from Law Department. I think what Jake was referring to under the charter, the DPW Commissioner and the city engineer have certain responsibilities for the oversight of the right-of-way. And then they bring items like this for your approval, because it's a permanent, semi-permanent adjustment to the right-of-way, subject to revocations. So these permissions are revocable by the council upon thirty days' notice if the applicant does not carry out the conditions that are incorporated into the ordinance, which we take... The comments that you see there become an exhibit to the ordinance, and the applicant has to, upon its adoption, write to the city clerk and acknowledge that he's going to... That the applicant is going to accept the terms and conditions of the ordinance.
So out of good faith, we're trusting that they're gonna do it properly?
Well, my recommendation has always been that DPW go out and inspect afterwards. And if the applicant is not following through with those recommendations or those requirements, then, as I mentioned, we could revoke the permission. And they would have to retreat out of the right-of-way.
But aren't we going backwards with that? Shouldn't we get the complete package when you bring it to the table, and then we don't have to worry about revoking it, because it's already done?
Yes and no. The... All encroachments will also require... Like, this would require a building permit as well. So this would be the approval to put the fence within the right-of-way where they're seeking. And then they would also need a building permit to actually construct it and put it there. So we have inspectors going out that will be verifying that and all the conditions contained within the encroachment. I mean, having conditional approvals is not something that's abnormal, a part of any permit. If that were the case, there'd be a lot of things that we would hold up that we wouldn't be able to issue without having conditions contained within.
And I understand that. But then it comes to us, and then we approve it, and then we come back two, three weeks later, and then we're talking about doing it over again. And I appreciate all that. But we're the legislative body, and we need to know what we're moving forward. And it needs to be in a completed manner, not done in pieces, so that we can move it in the right way.
Thank you.
Look, you don't want me to answer anything. Because I'm gonna be honest, sometimes I don't... I happen to agree with developers and don't agree with the recommendations we make. Don't point at me.
What I will point out is that a lot of stuff that we see, I think most people aren't even aware are in our right-of-way. I mean, this is... If you're standing on the sidewalk in the properties to my left here, this is off the sidewalk, where in most cases, it probably wouldn't be in the right-of-way. But we have some very wide right-of-ways, and we have a lot of people seeking encroachments for things that makes sense. So just visually, we want to make sure it's safe. But obviously, they need... A lot of people don't know that the right-of-way extends that far out sometimes. Sometimes the right-of-way can extend close to their property or halfway into their yard. They don't know.
And I was gonna say, a lot of people go right up to their front porch.
Exactly.
So I guess here's my question. And I don't know if this will sort of... Kind of puts us to rest. When we do these conditional permissions, this is, we have our recommendations. We're going out. This is just the initial. They have to still come get a permit, and we're continuously going and inspecting?
Correct.
Okay. In your experience, and I know, like, you've taken over in this last, you know, year or so, correct? Okay. Have... When we've done these conditional permissions and gone and done these things, how successful are we with actually getting the person doing the work, whether it's a homeowner, developer, whoever it may be, actually following what our recommendations are? How successful have we been?
As far as I'm aware, I've never been made aware of any issues where somebody's not following.
Well, we've had to do stuff over. I probably can answer that better than that.
Well, I know, and I agree. I like... Well, I've had issues in my own neighborhood where people just build stuff without anything.
Yeah. The most recent one was in Counselor Ryan's district, where they had to go re-dig up the sidewalk or whatever that was they did in front of their restaurant. I believe it was on Geddes. So we had one fairly recently.
I think there's some additional information that we could follow up on, and we want to revamp the process and take a look at it, so we can engage councilors at this time. But I just don't know that we have all the information that's being requested right now, so we could certainly follow up to get that.
The issues I think the council is referring to are the ones we give forgiveness instead of permission. Means, they already built it, and then they come to the council after the fact and ask permission. So quite a few of those. So this is... You know, that's where you run into the problems, if they don't get permission initially.
But this one is actually coming before us in advance.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
They're doing the process the way it should be done.
Rather than...
Rather than...
Some of my names.
Asking for forgiveness.
Okay.
That's a conversation.
All right. I'm gonna put a star next to this one.
You put a star next to it?
All right. So... All right. And so now, items twenty-four through thirty-nine. Yep. And so these are all new to our agenda, and for the most part, our majority are owner-occupied, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then how many? You had two vacant?
Yeah. Michelle Spansky, Neighborhood and Business Development. So we had three that were vacant residential's of the sixteen, one vacant lot, and then twelve that are owner-occupied.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I'll go through. Counselor Ryan isn't here, so I'll hold... Jeez. So I'll hold his.